Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jonas with Veterans and Politics. Today, our guest is going to be Bob Behrs. Bob is a former legislature. He is a former city councilman. And he was a candidate for governor at one particular time in the state. Now, Bob is running for city council, ward number four, I believe. Jim, yeah. Well, before we get to our guest, Jim, any rants?
Actually, not a rant. What I want to do is, I don't know if you found out or not, but I want to take a moment of silence for Wes Brummett, who passed away last night. He was a really good friend of mine, and I've known Wes for a long time. And he was just a really good guy. So I'd just like take a moment of silence for him.
Yeah, Wes was, still is, marine.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, I remember he always used to show up at those little, what's the ones at those festivals, the Greek festival? Yeah. There on, I forget where it was by the 215 Flamingo area, I think.
Yeah.
And that's where they have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I've had dinner with him and his wife, Irina, one time at their home.
Yeah.
Which was many years ago, but when, when I saw that post, I was like, get out of here.
Yeah.
Covid, of all.
Yeah. Yeah, I was in Valley Hospital for like 16 days.
Yeah.
Which was too bad.
And you know, I'm calling people to come to the ball, right? So now, you know, I did the text messages, the Facebook.
Yeah.
The email. But one thing I've learned is that people like that personal call.
Right.
So I'm only personally calling people that I have a good friendship with or have known over the years, or I, or they're, they're good acquaintance, or they were good candidates, or you know, they're, they're elected that, that we get along with. So I call those, those are the categories I call people. And I'm, and I'm in the Js right now.
Yeah.
And one thing I've learned, calling all these people from A to J, because it's still got to go to Z before the 19th, right?
Right.
So, so I found out that five, oh, sorry, four people that I know are dead.
Yeah.
They passed away. David Rivers is one. Remember David Rivers, candidate for judge and attorney? He passed away in 20, 20, and I didn't even know about it. I spoke to his wife, Kathy, a couple of days ago. And then I found out there's six other people that moved out of the state. One of them was Hugh Limb. Remember Hugh Limb?
Yep.
Moved out of the state. I didn't even know, so. So I guess, you know, these phone calls are, are kind of waking me up, kind of telling me, hey, you need to like start paying attention to other people instead of the little circle of five I got, like Jim Jonas.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm gonna, after, after this ball thing is over, I'm gonna get, start getting more involved with people that I actually known over the years and actually like to be around, like Bob Behrs, you know? You know, stuff like that, so. So I, I think that it is gonna work out. But, you know, speaking of the ball, February 19th, South Point Hotel is their sixth biennial. We've been doing this for 12 years now. We do it every other year. Five to six cocktail hour, six and on is dinner, dancing, and whatever goes on after six o'clock. But we welcome anybody that wants to come and, and be at our event. It's always fun. It's great. There's a five-course meal. South Point has been very gracious to us. And come on down, have fun. And we tell folks, A, if you can't make it for whatever reason, sponsor a veteran, and we'll put your name in a raffle. You know how people, oh, I can't make it.
Right.
Click. I'll be like, hold on, hold on, hold on. No, 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 no. You can't make it? Sponsor event for dinner. Easy done, so. I know it's a little pricey, but the price of lumber went up like five times, so don't get mad at me for my little price.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up.
Price of beef went up.
I'm glad you brought that up, because a couple of people that, and I actually just got off the phone this morning with Robert Madoff. And we were talking. And like a lot of people that have said that to me about the price, I'm like, but yet you can go to all these other events, and it's like $75 here, $50 here. Like 250 every other year is not that much.
I know. We do this every 24 months, and people are big beef about it. Come on, hell? We're not like those other groups that have a fundraiser every weekend. Every 24 months, give me a break. Oh, I can't make it. It's every 24 months. I see you in '22. I mean, what's the next one after this? 24, the president's election.
Yeah.
They go, oh, I'll do it next year. I'm like, there isn't, there's no bout ball next year. So that's my, that's my story on that.
All right.
Bob Behrs.
Steve Sanson. Doing well, thank you.
Tell us about you.
Well, I grew up here in Las Vegas. In fact, not far from your palatial studios here. And went to UNLV, did a couple of different work things. I was a radio news broadcaster on KLUC as a very young man, and then went back and got a business degree and a CPA license, and had a company that helped small businesses computerize their accounting, basically. And then eventually, another one that was an auditor of small public companies in the raising public money arena. In between, I have.
So you're CPA by trade?
I am.
Forensic. Do you do forensic?
I do a little forensic auditing. Yes, I do, as a matter of fact.
All right. North Las Vegas probably going to need you to go through there.
Well, I'm, I'm, I keep busy paying attention to the city of Las Vegas's books, since that was the city in which I was raised and in which I live.
Right.
And it's actually that that got me off the couch and decided, made me decide to run for the city council again. I had managed, with my discussion and voting as a member of the city council, to steer them out of taking people's stuff. The city of Las Vegas.
Like a bully?
Yeah, yeah. City of Las Vegas has a very long history of taking people's stuff.
Wow.
When we were young men, they took a family's drugstore down at like Fourth and Fremont, because the city council had a vision. And that vision turned into Neapolis, probably still the most embarrassing commercial property on Fremont Street. Immense amount of government money spent and lost building that facility. And it is what it is. It provided an object lesson for many decades, and helped stop the city council from repeating that error. Until the mid 2010s, I had been a member of the council in the first half of that decade and kept the city from taking anything from people. After I left, they took the Badlands Golf Course.
Did they use eminent domain to take?
They were trickier than that. The backstory on the Badlands is that the city council 40 years ago gave the owner then permission to build houses on it. The owner built a golf course instead, and surrounded the golf course with very tony homes, very high-priced homes. And fast forward 35 years, the golf course failed. It was not making money. It was not a fun course for many people to play.
Using a lot of water.
Half of it had been thrown up in a real fast fashion without proper golf course engineering. So the dirt on the fairways was very, very thin. And it was, it was not a fun course to play. And so it closed, and the owners set about exercising that right that had been granted by the city council 35 years ago to build houses. The people who already lived next to it objected, and we had a ongoing city issue going through this process. Couple of homeowners on the golf course decided they weren't going to have any construction while they were still alive, and spent an inordinate amount of money, not just on removing me from office, but as well on the follow-up actions that the city council did with the new guy, which was the taking. So what they did is they just said, no, you can keep the land, but we're taking back the right for you to build. Well, courts have long held that once a city has granted the right to build on land, that's a tangible asset. The right to build is a tangible asset. And that's what the city took. The owner filed lawsuits, four of them, because the land is in four parcels. The first of the four lawsuits has been adjudicated. It was in the first week of December last year. And the city was told to pay this developer $33 million, plus lawyers and interest. The hearing on lawyers and interest took place late last week, and I don't believe a decision has been made on how much that is. But I'm told eminent domain lawyers are pretty pricey.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Probably 40 million bucks total for the first of the four lawsuits. There's three more rolling down that are going to have similar price tags. And that's just not money the city has in its budget.
So how, how's the city plan to pay?
Don't know the answer to that. No, there's no insurance for this kind of thing.
Really?
Oh, no, no, no. This comes out of the general fund.
So it's coming from the taxpayers?
This comes from the money that we, the sales tax and property tax that we gather from taxpayers every year. And three quarters of that, we spend on public safety, basically. Between the city jail, the city marshal service, the, especially if you count the fire department, it's public safety, the EMT crew, all that is about three quarters of the city's budget. And our contribution to Metro.
So Bob, let me ask you a quick question on when the general fund? Because I'm kind of confused on, I mean, I know what the general fund is, but like, I don't like the way the general fund is used in any municipality, and especially at the state government level. Is there any way we could just do away with the general fund? In which you would have to, because I'm on transparency in government. So then.
Here's how I would explain it.
Okay.
And part of this.
Because you're way smarter than me, so please go ahead. That's why I asked you that.
You're asking me questions within my college degree. So I do know a little bit about it, but, but it's not what everybody studies. There's a whole separate genre of accounting called governmental accounting.
Right.
And there, we don't have retained earnings and net income, because those are for profit. So government is a nonprofit function, and so it has a different terminology, but it's still dollars being collected and spent. So the fundamentals of accounting still have to take place.
Right.
You can almost think of different funds as different subsidiary businesses.
Okay.
McDonald's has, I don't know, I'm gonna make it up, 25 locations on the west side of Las Vegas, right?
Right.
Each little McDonald's has its own income statement, but also together, they have a grand income, a big combined income statement. So, so each fund is kind of like a separate McDonald's. So in the city of Las Vegas, we have separate funds for like sewer treatment. Our water treatment plant is paid for, and our sewer pipes is paid for out of an assessment of all homeowners in the city of Las Vegas. Because it's a, it's a different function, it's a different job than most of what else the city does, it's called its own fund. It's an enterprise. And as well, the city, the city hopes that the sewer fund will run and pay for itself by the fees collected. So we kind of account for it over here in the separate bucket. Meantime, we have another separate bucket over here for maybe our, our, our public safety. And the general fund is stuff that's not a special fund. So that's all it is. It's the, it is both the miscellaneous category and a lot of what government does. So you, you can, you can, and this is something we always experience with government. You can have an issue with that particular program that your government is doing, but you like that particular program. They both come out of the general fund. And it's kind of the nature of government, especially when you, when you get into big dollars in government, as we have pursued in Nevada for many decades. We've made our government most expensive per employee in America. And sometimes that's a good thing. It is what it is. It's a statistical reality. And within that, I try to bring common sense to the, to the table when we talk about how to spend it.
Bob, could you tell us about your, your political career, the years, and what transpired and what you did? Start with the first one.
Starts in junior high school, when I was the one who would run out in the morning and get the newspaper off the driveway and be the first one to read it.
Really?
It's been, my mom didn't quite know what to make of me. And, and so I grew up, went to college, got a job, did some stuff. And in about 1998, I guess, at this point, I'd already volunteered for other people's campaigns, and decided that I wanted to do this myself. And so I ran for assembly in that year and got elected and served for the first time in the 1999 legislature. I did 10 years in the legislature, six in the senate, or six in the assembly, four in the senate. And then in 2011.
While you were in the senate, what, what committees did you serve?
Oh, senate finance, government relations, and the committee name changed every session, but it was essentially the section of law that deals with elections and government service and ethics in government. Those were my three committees.
You were going with 11.
Yeah, so then in 2011, I ran for, I was, I was working. I had, well, long story short, my city councilman stepped down to become the DA. And, and the city council scheduled a special election. And I'd been out of politics for five, or six, or seven, or eight years at that point. So from far, far outside the ring, I threw my hat in, and I ended up winning that special election. Joined the city council in 2011 and served until 2015. Then in 2018, I ran for treasurer statewide, and just narrowly lost that to a guy who's worked out well for the state, I think. And so this is, I don't know if you want to call it a comeback. I want to call it. I'm mad because the city's got to pay $40 million on this first eminent domain lawsuit, and there's three more coming. And they need some help figuring out how to get that done.
So that's exactly why I wanted to ask you, like you already said while you were running, but so what is it that, like, you obviously have the knowledge, and you understand where things are going wrong, but a lot of people would just be, stand back, wouldn't get involved in the circus again, or get the itch, you like to call it.
Go back to putting my, putting on my thongs at the age of 11 and going out to the driveway and getting the newspaper every morning.
Well, you missed in a very important race that you ran for.
I probably did. Which one is that?
That was a fun race.
Which one?
When you ran for governor.
Oh, yeah, that was when I was currently.
You remember all those debates?
I do remember those debates. That was, that was really a fun experience. And then everybody's cut out to run statewide.
You had Jim Gibbons.
If you do, it's great fun.
You had Jim Gibbons.
That was a five-person primary.
You had Rain Hunt, and I don't know the others.
Nobody else did either.
Fair enough.
And I was just a Scotia head of Lieutenant Governor Hunt, and she, and we were both a whole bunch of Scotias behind Jim Gibbons.
Yeah.
Who went on to win the general.
That, that was absolutely a fun race. I remember that like it was yesterday. But you know what I also remember too, councilman, or you were councilman back then, Councilman Behrs. I remember when I came to you, and I said to you, I said, hey, you know, these bail, the bail window has no cover in. And I thought you was gonna ask me, where's the money coming from? Because you know, you're.
I've probably taken, oh, I know where it comes from. It comes from sales tax and property tax. But that doesn't mean they shouldn't have shade over the bail window where moms and dads go to get their kids out.
Right, and you got it done, so I wanted, and a lot of people don't know that.
If I've ever taken credit for it, let me back up, because you're right. It was your phone call, and it was your idea, and you got it on.
So you're the one that got it done, and I, and I always remember that, and I really appreciate that, that you took the time to listen and got it done.
The city helps too, and it's hard, you know, I'll tell you. Running that jail has an awful lot of responsibilities attached to it. And you can't pick up everything. And that's a perfect example of citizen input into a matter that makes a lot of sense, but nobody just, nobody thought about it. That's just, that's just not part of their day job. And so once we brought it up and pointed it out to them and figured out how basically simple it would be to do, it was just a matter of weeks. And so I thank you for that.
Thank you for doing it. Have you visited the jail any time in your career as city councilman?
What are you trying to ask there, Steve?
Voluntarily.
Oh, voluntarily.
Voluntarily. Did you take a tour to see what was going on there?
As a matter of fact, I did several tours in the city jail. City jail is not where we put hardcore people. And so it's not.
They start off there.
It's not, they do start off there. If they get picked up, yes, you're correct. So, but in general, it's not as prone to really bad people and really bad behavior like the county jail is. That's the next level up, and then of course, state prison beyond that. So most people in the city jail are there on short stints of one kind or another. There's a lot of folks who are mentally ill and addicted, and that's why they end up running afoul of the law. It's a very imperfect process to deal with those kinds of people, but it is what it is. And we have both city, both state laws and city ordinances that prescribe certain levels of behavior for people. And when you break them, you go through the system. So yes, I've been inside. I understand how they organize it, how it looks like, what it looks like, how it works. I wish we had better answers for the addicted mentally ill population. We all want better answers. We just don't have them. And so we somewhat flail about trying to, trying to solve the problem that we just don't know how to solve, I think.
Were you on the council when North Las Vegas got rid of their jail and teamed up with Las Vegas?
Yes, and that arrangement ended, I believe, shortly after I left the council. Yeah, but for a while, it was helpful for both entities. North Las Vegas was.
Paying.
Paying, and they had a bad, they had a facility that wasn't operated very well at the time. And so, and we had, and the city of Las Vegas had the capacity. And so for a period of years there, yes, we did house the North Las Vegas jail inmates. North Las Vegas paid the city of Las Vegas a ballpark of what they were paying themselves when they were trying to run it themselves. And that was one interlocal agreement I was involved with.
From the council that you were on to the council that exists now, what's the pros and cons, you see?
Well, it's different people. The mayor's probably, and Stavros Anthony are the only two people still on the council from when, when I left in 2015. So there's five different people there. Some of them I've met. Some of them I haven't met yet. And, and it's hard, it's, it's probably, it's not only hard, but it's probably wrong to generalize. You have to focus in on specific issues. The Badlands is one where they got, they, they hired a guy as the city attorney who just didn't know any better, or, or something.
It's not Brad Jerbikin, yeah?
It's not. Brad, Brad retired in some small part because of the Badlands issue and the taking question. But at any rate, this council did, in fact, go ahead and take the landowner's stuff. Didn't pay for it, and now we've got a buzzsaw of angry judiciary lining up to make us pay. And it's, I, I wish it weren't true, but it is. I wish it didn't happen, but it did. Whether we can find some creative solution out there, working with this developer and this landowner to not cause us to reduce our contribution to Metro by 15% and lay off 15% of our, 20% of our employees, for example. We'd like to avoid that. And, and whether we can find that, I'm pretty confident that a smart, experienced council can negotiate out a new answer that won't involve quite this capital outlay for taxpayers.
So Bob, I just, so Steve and I have known you for a long time, and, and I'll speak for myself on this one. I'm not as knowledgeable about government as you are, obviously. But most people aren't either. So if you could just, like, what is actually the role of a city council person? And like, what are they in charge of? What are they not?
Uh, the, in Nevada, well, you, you get a different answer in Nevada than you get in California or Arizona.
Okay.
Because, because let's start off with the legislature.
Right.
In Nevada, one of the interesting and different things about Nevada is that the city charter, like, that's the city's little mini constitution.
Right.
It describes its purpose, its reason, its methods. Is a state law. So the city cannot change its charter. Only the legislature can change the city's charter. And that's the primary reason, one of the, one of the big ah-hahs of my first legislative session many years ago, was learning that more than half the lobbyists in Carson City on any day of the legislature are working for government, not for the private sector. We have an immense government codependency thing going on here because the legislature has such tight control over city charters. That said, in general, your local government, which is the city, is, is in charge of your streets, laying them out, maintaining them. Often, your flood control, planning for when it rains, your sewer, garbage, police, fire, dog catchers. That's most the jail, for those of us who misbehave, go spend the night in the jail. That's most of what the city's orders are to do. Consequently, the county doesn't get involved with your surface streets on your street where you live. The county doesn't get involved with the provision of your city's police department. In most places, we do have a unique interlocal agreement in Las Vegas with Clark County.
Right.
Where we together jointly stand up one force. We call them Metro. But they don't have Metro in Henderson or North Las Vegas. They have their own city police departments, right? So generally, that's kind of what a city does. It's the first base layer of government. And then above that, in most places, there is a county. And the county is in charge of more regional things. So things like air pollution. We find air pollution has no respect for the city boundary, for city limits.
Right.
Right? And so for that reason, it's bigger than the city can handle. The legislature has handed that off to the regional government and said, you take care of that. Other categories where the county goes and the city is not supposed to go include homelessness, social services, particularly for, for children, worrying about kids who are, who, whose parents don't have it together, basically. And a number of other, but what really makes us different is that our biggest city in this valley is the county. in this valley is the county. They have more than nine hundred thousand citizens in it and the city of Las Vegas has a little bit more than six hundred thousand. So, so the county, city services piece is actually bigger than the city. Uh and so, that creates some interesting frictions between the entities and also as well, creates some interesting opportunities for intergovernmental cooperation. Uh another reason why experience matters in deciding who to elect to represent you at city hall, because I served in the legislature with Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman Kirkpatrick. So I have, you know, I know her. I can call her up on her cell. She can call her up, she can call me up on her cell and together we can work on joint problems, so. Um so that's kind of the relationship between city and state and, and city and county and then the state is even bigger than that. And uh in, in Nevada, uh our state has a number of functions, um the university system, the prison system, um and some, but they also provide local government services in the seventeen or the fifteen smallest counties. Cause Nevada has two big counties, Clark and Washoe. They're both clearly cities and urban environments. But the other fifteen counties are pretty sparsely populated. There's a few cities scattered throughout, but none of them bigger than a hundred thousand people.
Right.
So, the state provides some of those uh county and city level services to those rural counties as well. So, for example, murder investigations in, let's say, Esmeralda County are investigated by the Nevada Division of Investigations. Not the Esmeralda Sheriff's Department. Well, they're jointly investigated, but they don't really have much of a detective force. Understand Esmeralda County has eight hundred and fifty people in it. In a space bigger than Clark County. So, they don't have the resources to maintain a homicide division, much less a detective division necessarily. Right? So Nevada is, you know, we're, we're, we're a bit, as I've gotten older and had more opportunity to compare how Nevada manages and sets up its government, we're quite a bit different from a lot of other places.
We just recently did redistricting. Do you agree with the, with the boundary lines that they have drawn?
Um, well, there's three million Nevadans and I bet you could get three million plans put together if you asked enough of us. So, so I mean, you're talking about drawing lines on them. Let me tell you, I'll tell you a reapportionment story. I'll see if I can do this without naming names.
That's gonna be tough.
Gerrymandering is always fun, right?
I was heavily involved in the two thousand one legislative reapportionment. Uh by heavily involved, I was a close spectator. I was a member of the minority party, so I was not allowed to actually participate. Um, they got the maps done and um in one of the, in both houses, they, they had a day where they would bring in each member and show them what had happened to their district lines in reapportionment that was currently being planned and can you live with this? And one of the members said, you know, I'm looking here at the map and if we could just take this one section here and flip it over there, then I'd be able to say I was born in my district. And she was a majority member and so, they did.
Just for?
Yeah.
Just because of that?
And, and she was able to say for her last term that she was born in her district. So, um I guess the point of the, the story is that it's not a, it's not a um, there's no one right way to do it. Um it's a dynamic, multifaceted input pinging in from all over the world process. And out of that comes the new lines and, and it's a, it's, it's the most partisan thing that happens in government is reapportionment. Uh because they don't let them, because the majority doesn't let the minority participate.
What's going on with all the pockets? For example, um I'm in the Northwest. And um I thought I was in Ward Six.
Uh you might have been. You might have been, because there was some change up there.
And then I looked and there are pockets of county. And, and, and here, here's, 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 here's the pocket.
There's whole racks of genes of county. Those aren't pockets. Those are whole racks of genes.
How did that even happen?
Well, um because uh the reason that, one of the reasons that the county and the city of Las Vegas have such large teams at the legislative session is to make sure that nobody cuts in on anybody else's turf.
Kinda like gangs.
Kinda like gangs. And so, in the beginning, everything out in the Northwest was Clark County. Unincorporated Clark County. And then the city of Las Vegas came along and started annexing chunks. Howard Hughes, bless his pointy little head, bought a whole bunch of land way out there in the west edge of the valley and they, his heirs ended up calling it Summerlin. When, when that happened, um they decided to join the city on kind of a trial basis. And after about five, six years, they didn't like the city very much anymore, so they went over to the county. And they didn't allow the annexation of, by the city. So, the cities, and this is not just Las Vegas, Henderson is very much in this game, North Las Vegas is very much in this game, are always looking to expand their boundaries through annexation. The landowner has to agree. Now, if it's a, a builder who has a large block of land and they, they wanna get on city sewer, that, that's easy for them and the annexation takes place. But when you get down to individual people's lots, sometimes people don't want to join the city.
Could you work on something for me?
So that's how that big island occurred. The city's been trying to annex.
Right.
And the county uh residents there are saying, no, thank you. And, and every two years, there's another group of annexations on some part of that county island boundary with the, the city taking a bite of it.
I get it. If, if and when you become city councilman again, you know how um the Las Vegas Valley water, they say, take up all the sod, replace it with desert and we'll pay you X amount of dollars for doing that? So, in the Northwest, and I'm sure it's probably in Blue Diamond too, wherever there's roads, um a lot of us are on septic.
And wells.
And wells. Well, we, we don't mind being on wells because I don't know what's going on with you guys' water. You guys' water is dropping dramatically. I know I'm gonna be good for a hundred years. I don't know about the rest of, the rest of Vegas, but with the septic, um they, they should give us some type of um funding to get off of septic and to go on sewer. And the reason why I say that is because you guys don't recycle all the water from the sewer, right? But on septic, you can't, you can't do that.
So, wow.
So there should be some type of um incentive for homeowners to come off of septic and go on sewer like, like.
That's interesting, so.
Like sod to desert.
The, the, it's not just septic, but wells is what typically drives the decision of a person in the county island to be annexed. Because although you're enjoying your well now, it turns out that the water level beneath it that it draws from is dropping. And a number of wells in the Northwest have approached, have got to the point where they have to dig it deeper.
We're six twenty-five.
In order to keep water coming.
We're six hundred and twenty-five feet. That's two football fields down.
You're fortunate. There are people in the city who have had to dig their well deeper. They did, their well wasn't as deep as yours and that's a very expensive process.
We got hit with a twenty-three thousand dollar bill because it collapsed and then we had to replace a couple of other things.
So, so.
There's three homes on this well.
The risks of, of being on your own well, as well as the risks of being on your own septic, because you, you do have ongoing cost with the septic. We, you have to pump it out every so often.
Five hundred every three years.
Which is, which is less than we charge you for sewer service. Quite a bit less. I'm sorry, quite a bit more than what we charge you for sewer service. Sewer service about a hundred and twenty a year. Ballpark, yeah. Hundred and thirty, hundred and forty. Ballpark. So, um uh but that's what causes people to decide to join the city and, and, and allow themselves to be annexed. They pay a, just a teeny bit higher property tax uh in order to be in the city. Uh but that's really what drives much of that. The, and, and really circling, you asked a very complex question in fairly simple terms, Steve. The other piece.
You're Bob Bears.
Yeah, right. The other piece of this uh is, is the uh, i- is the evaporation issue. We lose water when it evaporates and that's what happens to much of what you lay out on your lawn. Um if you, if it goes down the sink, it goes into the sewer and it gets recycled. It's a long, complicated process how it gets recycled, but it gets cleansed, dropped back into Lake Mead.
You can drink that.
Mixed with the Colorado and then downstream picked back up again. We get to use that gallon of water a second time. At any rate.
Doesn't that sound nasty?
Yeah, it does. Uh but you know, Steve, dinosaurs pooped in this bottle of water.
Okay.
We've had a finite amount of water on earth, near as all the scientists can say.
Touche, Bob Bears.
And, and uh the solution to pollution is dilution. Yeah, at any rate.
Bob is rhyming now.
Yeah, rhyming Bob.
To get you with uh Snoop Dogg.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I got, I, I got a question uh for you, but.
Uh wait, hang on. Back to your question on the septic.
Sorry about that.
Um, once the water goes down into your septic, it doesn't evaporate. It goes back into the earth and it recharges eventually, six hundred feet down. It recharges the water. Uh and so.
Don't tell me I'm drinking septic water.
I'm not gonna, I would never say that.
Okay.
But the point is, is that there's a smaller opportunity to save water than you think. Moving someone off the septic onto the sewer, because their water doesn't evaporate.
And that's what I'm saying. Shouldn't, there should be some type of incentive to homeowners to do that, because it costs anywhere between eighteen to thirty-five thousand dollars to move from septic to sewer. Cause they gotta dig up the street, they gotta put flag guys out there, all kinds of craziness.
And it, it works a lot better when there's a whole bunch of people coming on at once and we can do that one time. Um, I've never heard it discussed. The, we're already at the cutting edge of what government does on water conservation, offering you money to take out your grass.
I brought it up to the county. Um in fact, I brought it up to Maryland Kirkpatrick a couple of months back.
What did she say?
They were gonna look into it, so.
Um, I, I, I suspect one of the issues is that the water that goes down your septic tank doesn't get evaporated like the water that goes out on your lawn does. And therefore, there's less concern from a, 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 a conservation of resources perspective with the sewer, with the septic versus with the lawns and the landscape.
Okay, I got a two-part question.
Wait, he's got one.
Oh.
Yeah, it's his turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, geez, Steve. So, Bob, first off, uh I just have so much respect for you. Like just, like your knowledge level and the way you break everything down is so great. But we have this movement in this country right now that it's fortunate or unfortunate, however you wanna look at it, that uh is, I think they're looking at more from the presidential level that like, okay, we had Trump, now we got Biden, so we got seventy-four-year-old, a seventy-eight-year-old, like. So there's this drive now to get younger people in the office. And I'm not against that. But how do you, uh how do you get elected? How, how do you get people to understand that like, just because maybe someone else is younger, they don't have the knowledge that you do? You know what I mean? Because that's one of the things like, I always.
They can pick up the knowledge. I mean, it's just knowledge and if you study it, you'll learn it too. You know, it's just that I happened to spend a few years in government instead of on my day job and that's what I studied. You, you're, you're, you're diving into second guessing voter decisions, basically.
Yeah, pretty much.
Uh and um I've never spent much time doing that, because I don't find much percentage in it for, for, I don't find much benefit in it. The, the people are people. And uh this campaign that I'm in now for city council is no different than uh my campaign for assembly twenty years ago. Uh the job is to go out and introduce myself to people and assure them that I'm actually going to be available to them as a representative. I can't get everything done. And if you got an idea that nobody likes, I probably can't get that done. But if you have ideas in general, run them by me, because that's my job is to take your ideas downtown. Uh and, and so, it just comes down to whether the larger number of voters think that that's true or not, or, or, or think there's a better alternative for their support. Or they can be mad. You know, my, my city council lost in twenty fifteen. I wasn't doing anything wrong, as we now see with the Badlands litigation rolling out.
Against you though.
Oh, big time, that whole raid. But, but, but it was a small part of what the couple of homeowners on Queens Ridge had budgeted to stop to make sure there is no construction by their house while they were alive. And so, the city council, they spent a million bucks, which is still a record for a city council race in Las Vegas. Um, uh and in that kind of environment, yeah, with, it's one thing to lie and nobody listens, but if you can put that lie in every single mailbox dozen times.
Then people don't think it's the truth.
Then people think it's the truth.
No.
And so, um that's what happened. And hey, that's politics. I'm not doing this because I like to see my name up on the wall.
Neither.
I'm doing this because my city government has screwed up. And my city government has displayed very bad behavior, my city council. I'm, I'm a resident too, has displayed bad behavior. They took people's stuff without paying them for it, which in my book is as low as government can go. Uh and they need some, they need to move away from that philosophy. I can help do that.
So, so Mr. Bears, um when you first were um city councilman, it was Ward Two, right?
Yes.
And now it's Ward Four.
We moved.
You moved.
Yeah, we moved. Um after I left the city council, uh we moved a mile away to Sun City. And that's over the boundary into Ward Four. So, um we actually used to, if you'll recall, the chronology in Ward Two, the guy who beat me and, and walked the city into um taking that landowner's stuff uh resigned about the two-year mark into his uh, into his term in a scandal, a, a whole separate scandal that the city is going to have to pay for. Uh and then the city council called a special election. And I got calls, because I was the last councilman before this knucklehead.
And I told them not to get rid of Bob Bears.
Well, but they didn't listen to you. They didn't listen to me.
And now look what happened to it.
So I um, I um talked to my wife, you know, I, you know, I got some calls, this Ward Two's open. You know, if you wanna move. And she said, we're not moving. So we stayed put in Ward Four and um I um uh, I mean, I, I hear of people who move in order to be an advantageous district. I don't. That's not how I, that's not how I approach this.
Carpet bagging?
This is, this is, this is, this is public service.
So, so could you give us the boundary lines from Ward Four?
Man, it's tough.
Yeah, it just, just roughly, I don't like, like I said, gerrymandering is kinda crazy.
Look at the map. Uh plus, plus you have the giant county island now is right in the middle of Ward Four. So before this last reapportionment two months ago, um Ward Four ran from roughly West Lake Mead and Durango or so um north to like Anne Road. Now it goes north all the way to the other side of the two fifteen. Um, what drove the reapportionment here is the biggest growth in the city of Las Vegas is in the far, far north. Unless you go out there, you don't realize it, but if you go out to the Kyle Canyon Turnoff now, holy smokes. The biggest, the biggest grocery store in town is the Smith's Food King out there. And there's another master plan community going in with big, nice, cool trails and all kinds of stuff, but that's where the people are moving. So Ward Six, which is that northern tip, had to shrink. And it's, it's, it's covered on, on three sides by city, city limits. Can't go that way, so it had to go north and Ward Four took up that slack. Um, not as much change in Ward Two or the other wards, a little bit in Ward Five. But anybody who was down in that, in that northwest around US ninety-five needs to check to see where they ended up, because there was a lot of changes in reapportionment for all those folks.
Well, we, we're starting to run out of time, but uh what, what committees did you sit on when you were council? And what, what committees do you wanna sit on as you come back to um city council, if, if you get reelected?
So, another interesting thing we've done here is take some services, in part because of the. So another interesting thing we've done here is take some services, in part because of the conflict created by the county being the largest city and it having to wear two hats. So like our water has been taken away really by agreement from the, the local governments and the Southern Nevada Water Authority was created. Um, so there's a number of areas where we've centralized a particular service. And that typically has a governing board that includes members of the city council, county commission, city councils, actually, from multiple cities, county commission. When I was on the city council, I, uh, served on a couple of different committees. I was, uh, the biggest was probably the Southern Nevada Health District. And, uh, I was on the executive committee for five years and two and a half years or so as the chairman of the board. Uh, but I also served on the Clark County Debt Management Committee, which is another interlocal that monitors how close we get to a limit in state law as far as how much money we can collectively borrow for the combined schools and water and everything else. So we put it all together, uh, and, and decide if the next issue that's being proposed makes sense or not. Uh, also sat on a, um, a, uh, audit committee that the city of Las Vegas maintains internally with a couple of council members and a couple of volunteers from the community and the financial services field. The city council actually only has three people that it can directly hire and fire, city manager, city attorney, and the city auditor. Um, and so, um, the audit function is, is heightened a little bit because of that by the legislature. It's the way they wrote our charter and the other cities as well. Um, so those were my primary committees and then a number of ad hoc committees that get set up.
So, um, Mr. Bears, do we cover everything you'd like to cover?
Well, that's a heck of a question. We haven't really tackled world peace yet. Not part of the city council's agenda.
He's always had a sense of humor. He's got one of those sense of humor without no affleck, you know? But, um, Council Bob, um, Jim, you have anything else with Bob Bears?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, uh, help you out with this one, Steve, so don't have to, uh, so if Bob is gracious enough to show up for endorsement interviews, then obviously I can't be on the panel. Because it's not an endorsement of veterans of politics, but you already know, personally, I, Jim Jonas, will automatically endorse Bob Bears.
This is, this is one of the most interesting endorsement processes in the valley that you have put together over many years.
Yeah, I remember one time you said, uh, Steve tried to eat two bears.
I've won your endorsement sometimes and I have lost your endorsement sometimes. And it's always really interesting to watch it happen. There's really nothing.
It's always really interesting to watch.
You get real people. Uh, and there are a number of groups that don't go through that process. Uh, and so I, I, whether I get the endorsement or don't, I always enjoy the process that you put together. And I think in a couple of years where I, where I haven't been up for election, I've actually volunteered to come down and emcee your.
Yeah, you, you're a master ceremonies a, um, a couple of times. Yeah, so the rhythm kitchen and.
It, it is always, uh, it is always fun. I enjoy, uh, hearing other people's thoughts about government.
So, yeah, and, and it's the only one that's actually taped so the public could see it.
You can go back and watch it all, I know, I know.
So, and it's in live stream now.
What's that?
Can't say, oh, you guys edited. I'm like, no, look at the live stream, it's the same.
Well, actually, since I've been doing, uh, moderating the, the last time, I actually, uh, went back and I took the script from you to, to, to tell everybody what the rules were.
I hate to tell you, Jim, I was just making it up.
I actually just copied that and I'm like, oh, that's okay.
I was just making it up.
No back talking. I get the final word. I tell you shut up, you shut up.
That's right. I can unplug your microphone.
All right, Councilman Bears, um.
Thanks for having me.
We appreciate you coming down and, um, telling us your position. And, uh, we appreciate that. And if you could look into the camera and Mark is gonna zoom in on you and you tell folks why they should go and put you back in as city councilman, but this time in Ward Number Four and, uh, your point of contact.
Uh, you have a number of good choices for your Ward Four council, uh, selection this year. It's an open seat, cause our incumbent is, uh, term limited out, so we have to have a new council member. But amongst all those good choices, I'm the one with experience too. Um, my cell number is seven oh two five nine two eight eight two two. And, uh, feel free to, to, uh, reach out and ask me any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bears. Thanks, Jim. Folks, that's, uh, Bob Bears. He is a former legislature, uh, former candidate for governor and former city councilman, and he's a, he's a CPA by trade. This is, uh, and he's running for a city council, Ward Number Four. This is Steve Sasse, Jim Jonas, until next time.